... purposes and needs to conduct the business of the Gethysburg area school district. Public comment is welcome. Initials where referred to the appropriate board committee or administrator. Comments will be summarized in the official board minutes, which will be available by contacting the business office. Ms. Collins, everybody's here in good order. Please stand.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, I am issued, under God, invincible, liberating justice for all.
Good evening, everybody. Need to point or change, first off, aboard that executive session this evening that dealt with a property issue that we are evaluating. If you look at your agenda, we have one small change. We're going to start out, we're going to move public comment prior to any other action. And at this point, I would ask Sally Michael.
It's been awhile since I've been in this boardroom. I don't know if you all know I've served time with the school board. And I'm here for two reasons tonight. First and foremost, I'm a few days shy of National School Board Recognition Month, but I'd like to thank you all for the time and service that you're giving to our district. From personal experience, I know this is an unpaid job, and to do it well, it requires many hours of reading, preparation, and meetings. I thank each and every one of you for being willing to do this job. I thank you for making the commitments to coming to your meetings. It's important to be there. I know at times it can be a thankless job, but I have to say next to raising my four children was probably one of the most rewarding jobs I've ever had. In this time of great division in our country, I'd also like to ask that you work together as a board. You are a board of nine people. The school board should not be about being Republican or Democrat, left or right, them or us. It's about not, it's about working together as a group to do what is best for the students, employees, and taxpayers of this district. When a decision is made, it's time to move forward as a group to act on that decision and provide the best education possible for the students of this district. Please, I ask you, work together for the good of this district. My second reason for being here is Mr. Brad Hunt is coming up on his retirement. Brad, I'd like to personally thank you for the excellent work that you've done for the past 26 years as our business manager. Through your forward thinking and planning, the district has been able to complete many wonderful projects while still providing an excellent education for our students. Many times when attending conferences, your name would come up. Many times I would hear Mr. Hunt as one of the finest business managers around. I just want to personally thank you and enjoy your retirement. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Our next guest, Alex Yu.
How's everybody doing this evening? I wish it was under different circumstances, but I'm here to clarify a few things and bring light on a couple of issues. I'm not here to defend myself because there's nothing to defend. These baseless claims that was brought against me is not worthy of bringing up. What I am here to bring up is this group called Gethysburg Rising that did this political hit job on me. It's a group that leans left, and I'm going to stop right here real quick. This, we're a school board, we're here for the children of Adams County, Gethysburg School District. Politics should not be first thing here, but this group brought politics in here to do a hit job on me. I was looking forward to working with each and every one of you, but unfortunately, that did not come to fruition. This group hired a private investigator to look into stuff about me to try to do political hit pieces. And I want to say that it shouldn't be about that. What I want to first bring up is that I believe that there is a board member on here that is part of this Gethysburg Rising school district, on the school board. Mr. Hesseger, I would like for you to see if you could do anything and investigate into this, because if they, if you do find something, I do believe that would be against a good conduct. Now, I didn't have the privilege of looking at any book or anything to see what conduct is, but if that is, I think that would be worthy of. Then we're resigning their position and all, because they're putting politics ahead of the children of this school district. And as a parent, that's wrong. We should be looking at what is right in education and expanding for the kids, not politics. Secondly, I know this does, it kind of goes hand in hand. The Gethysburg Times, I think, also needs to be sure to get a tape recorder to make sure that they are quoting people properly. There's a couple of school board members also that have been quoted in the past, and I believe that that would be helpful to the Gethysburg Times. As a parent, I wish politics was not put ahead of education, and it's sad. And I feel that we need to learn from this experience. I want to, I wanted to work with everybody, but I'm a family person, and I put my family first. The baseless and hateful attacks that was on social media against me is unwarranted. You know, that like I said, that this Gethysburg Rising is a left-leaning thing. As the former First Lady says, "When they go low, we go high." I didn't see any high there. All I saw was low. And it's a shame that they even put politics ahead of the kids. So, I just want to say that I'm sorry that I was not being able to be a part of this, that I will pray for healing, and hopefully be able to heal the division and all. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Ms. Yu. Free point one, school board director resignation. Discuss and take action and accept the resignation of Mr. Alex Yu. Roll call. Al?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Timon?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Amy Beth?
And I vote yes.
Mr. President, I would like to make a motion that the board would select our ninth member from the candidates already interviewed.
I was going to address the two options that the board could consider. We now have a motion. Those two options to the record would have been a selection from the existing candidates that took part in the process, or the other motion would be that the board would open up the interview process and application process all over again, seeing there's a motion, probably second, that we would nominate or select from the remaining candidates. Are there any other questions on the motion?
Any other questions, please? Are we being able to pick three candidates, um, in the world meeting? Are they all looking to be included?
It's my understanding, Tim, that HR or the business office reached out to all three candidates and asked them plumm narrowly if they would be interested if the board decided tonight to go that direction. Is that correct?
That's how I understand it. Mr. Hunt, are these all three?
Mr. Hunt, all three?
All three.
Well, to expand on that, it's my understanding, actually, it's fact, the board would have
received an email today from one of the candidates, and the first sentence or two, they indicated that they did want to be considered. However, they further related that they wanted to address the process, and they had some, not only questions, but some conditions, so to speak, as to moving forward. So, the motion is on the floor to accept all three and choose from them three, correct?
But to clarify, I mean, I feel like we need to talk fast. We received an email, and our email is public, so I can share this with everyone, from Michelle Smires. Her first sentence says, "As you all should be aware, I declined to continue to be considered for the current vacancy on the GSE school board." And then you're welcome to read the rest of your email if you like, but I'm just never wanting to argue this in any way. I also want to remind this eight of us that we don't have a policy on how we fill a vacancy. We are, is at our full discretion legally and morally to fill a vacancy how we see it.
I agree with you, Kathleen. We're well past 30 days required to fill a vacancy, and at this point, we haven't been able to staff our committees and be able to move forward in our business of the district. There were only, only entering the district, so I feel that it's our duty to expedite the process.
At this point, we have a motion on the floor. It's been seconded.
Actually, can I, oh, so, but before we actually vote, there really are a couple of things that have come to mind. I have clearly been a supporter of our almost 3,000 voters who voted for Alice Broadway. So, I want to ask, Penny, do you know how many emails we received from taxpayers who we represent asking us to appoint Alice Broadway to the
I would, I could take a minute and look, but I would say that there's probably seven somewhere in that area.
And how many emails did we receive asking us to appoint any of the other, or potential nominees to that?
I don't recall any others.
None. And I just think that, again, you know, we're here to represent the people who put us here, the taxpayers, and they are speaking to us. And I would just encourage all of us to line up. Thank you.
I would also just add that I also think, because we are elected officials, and we do have some information that the general public does not have, I think we also have a responsibility to consider what Kathleen said, in addition to the most qualified and best fit for the needs of our board, and the person that would be the best fit, that would represent the entire Gethysburg area.
Any additional comments?
Do you have a question of the two remaining potential nominees? Are they both here this evening?
I see it's Broadway in the back, and it's my understanding that Mr. Hershey, after the last process, had a plane trip to Florida, and he's, to his best knowledge, he's out of state. Is that correct, Mr. Hunt? Any additional questions or comments? Motion on the floor is being first and seconded. Roll call. Amy Beth?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Timon?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Al?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Which will move us on to 3-3, the actual election and the candidate. I'm sorry, 3-2.
Mr. President, I would like to nominate Mr. Sylvan Hershey for the board.
I know there's debate, but I'll second that.
I will now make Alice Broadway second.
Well, we've been here before, so we'll do a roll call vote between Ms. Broadway and Mr. Sylvan Hershey. Tim?
Hershey.
Kathleen? Mike?
Mr. Sylvan Hershey.
Carrie?
Broadway.
Al?
Both would be terrific, but my vote is for Sylvan Hershey.
Amy Beth?
Sylvan Hershey.
And I will also vote Sylvan Hershey. See if it would be supported prior to the next meeting. I'm not sure, my understanding is he's returning before the next meeting, but I don't have that secondhand information on that.
Yeah.
As we mentioned earlier, this is Brad's last meeting, so I had to point that out to make it clear, the leadership of the business office. We're in a really, really great position in all the school districts these days, and a lot of that is, um, good work that the admin team has done, but also the vision that Brad has had over the years. So, thanks and enjoy And welcome, one of the in the back, the business manager upon Brad's retirement. She started with us today, has a lot of time with Brad, so welcome.
Can I say something about Mr. Hunt?
Yes.
I just wanted to point out for the public, may not hear this or get to see it, but in attending some of the conferences and training that I have attended, I've heard several times what a good position that the Gethysburg area school district is compared to the 500 other districts. And I've heard a lot of positive things about Mr. Hunt.
I would concur, Mr. Hunt, and I think we're probably going to hear, hopefully, some good news here near the end of the meeting under our audit. If any indication of our business and finance committee meeting is the same, district gives, definitely owes you a debt of gratitude for putting us in a position that we can extend the services that we actually do with fine staff that's actually sitting here today.
It's also tough for me to stay quiet, being a superintendent in the District 3 area for 10 years. I also know the job and the performance that Brad has done. Gethysburg School District, as a result of the decisions, and not just Brad, but also board members and administration, leave that. I forget how many positions exactly, just in the short tenure that I've been on the board. I think it's close to 11 positions. We have great resources for our students at the elementary, middle, and high school level as a result of the fiduciary decisions and just smart, prudent moves that have been made over the past several years during Brad's tenure. And I think Gethysburg is the exception to the rule. There's a lot of districts right now that are struggling to keep their heads above water. They're looking at curtailing and eliminating program services and some personnel in some districts, and that's a credit to Brad and the entire team here at Gethysburg. Well done, Brad.
I'd like to just keep keeping the phrase on there because there are many. And one of the things that stands out to me is, it is that time of year for the annual audit report, is that the audits come out with no findings, that they are clean audits, and that's very impressive, and kudos to you and your team because of all the work that goes into preparing for the audit, and then the results always come out with no negative findings. So, I appreciate the efforts of the entire business office and your leadership on that.
It's been a pleasure. I've said before, people here in this area are very important. People in the school district are very important, and my secret is that there are very important members who work for the board, and who now have support for the board here, providing the same position. I would say the same thing now, just have good work, right? It's fun watching people.
Under the next order of our business, we have routine approvals. Those would be 6.1 and 6.8, different than the action items. They are gathered together. Do I have any motions to accept or approve?
So...
Questions?
I did have a question on 3. With the dental contract, we have, Kathleen, that we offer this to our students, in fact, it's to stay tuned to the family, but I do have a question. It was since though, after I was reading this, that not only is there a cost to provide the service of the dentist, but that there's also an additional $10 per student. And I'm wondering if that's often the case, or if that was not as a concept at any point. And I didn't have a figure as to that was...
Sorry, it's been that way?
Has it? I can see it. I appreciate the statement.
And it's my understanding too, Tim, that we've been without in limbo for probably two years, and this is trying to bring us back up into the right place we're supposed to be. Anything further?
I do have a question also, just more of a curiosity. Not how many students are certified by the dental screening. You may not have that at your fingertips now, or you may.
I do not know, 300 approximately.
Roll call. Amy Beth?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Timon?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Al?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Number seven items for board action, and I'm going to do a vote individually on each of these. 7.1 is the Lincoln Intermeast Unit for Full Budget. Second. Question? Roll call. Timon?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Amy Beth?
Yes.
Carrie?
Epstein.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Al? And I vote yes. Do you need to do anything with that, Brad? I know I had the science for it. I knew I had been had before. Thank you.
Second.
More of a comment that is very detailed, and I appreciate the detail that goes with this. I also appreciate that the facilities are of the state that they are in because of the dedication of looking at what involves our capital projects, and we will keep moving that either up and down on the plan so that our facilities are of high quality and that our issues are resolved in a timely fashion so that they don't get larger. So, the details that are going into this are greatly appreciated, to understand all that's involved in the upcoming improvements for the 2021 year.
Any additional? Roll call. Al?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Timon?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Amy Beth?
Yes.
And I vote yes. 7.3, policy 006.1, attendance at meetings via electronic communications. Should we vote and take action? Any motion?
Second.
Question?
No question, but just a quick comment. Thanks for the input on this, and I think, as I mentioned before, I think it was the last meeting or at the policy committee meeting, we kept this policy as general as possible. We used a couple of other examples or model samples that we saw that were pretty good, and we want to give school board members as much flexibility as possible.
Thank you. Roll call. Tim?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Timon?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Al?
Yes.
Amy Beth?
Yes.
And I vote yes. 7.4, policy number 233, suspension and expulsion. Question?
Not a question, but once again, a comment, being with the policy committee. Dr. Parent, correct me if I'm wrong, this does not take effect until next school year, and it has to do with the mandated starting and ending of school age. That's the only thing that was made on this policy.
Any further? Amy Beth?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Timon?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Al?
Yes.
And I vote yes. In our last item, it's 7.5, the appointment of a business manager. Business manager, you notice in the, well, our new business manager, Swan, has already been hired. There are several items listed on the agenda that are routine in terms of having to have board approval if she moves forward. Do I have a motion on that, please? Al?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Timon?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Amy Beth?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Belinda is up around, still very upset with us, I guess they are.
Under informational items, the 8.1 Strauss Ness presentation. Thank you and welcome. Nice to see you again.
Hello. Yes, last year, I think I was 10 days prior to giving work, so no emergencies on a season, hopefully. So, but thank you for having me. My name is Krista Gardner, for those of you who weren't here last year. I am the Director of our Government Not-for-Profit Group at State Wellness, the engagement partner on the district audit. I have to say, what a way to celebrate your last board meeting by having an audit presentation. So, I'm glad we bumped into, you know, into the February meeting. But what you have in front of you tonight is a very high-level overview of the audit. I met with the finance committee, and we dug in a little bit more detail to essentially audit results, some discussion points. So, this is very high-level, but if there would be any questions, please yell. I'd be more than happy to try to answer those. So, I'm going to actually start on page four of that presentation and just kind of go over really how our audit works. And first off, as the auditor, we are responsible for performing an audit in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards, and we form and express an opinion about whether the financial statements are materially correct, clearly presented, and conform U.S. GAAP, or United States Generally Accepted Accounting Principles. And then we're required to communicate certain matters to you, which I'm doing tonight. I always like to remind everyone that an audit provides reasonable, not absolute assurance, that the financial statements are free from material misstatements. What that means is during the 18, 19 fiscal year, we were not watching everything that happened, and then when we conduct our audit, we don't test 100% of transactions. That would be extremely time-consuming, costly, and very difficult to do. So, essentially, it's up to us to do certain procedures to be able to give that opinion. On page five, then, the district's responsibilities are preparing and fairly presenting the financial statements, designing, implementing, evaluating, and maintaining effective internal controls of all aspects of the district's financial reporting. During the audit, providing us with unrestricted access to any documentation we may need to review, any people we might need to make inquiries of, if there would be any fraud, illegal acts, material weaknesses, or significant deficiencies, making us aware of those, if we were not made aware of any subsequent events. So, essentially, this audit was July 1, 2018 through June 30, 2019. It's hard to believe, that's six plus, seven months ago. But essentially, the subsequent event period is July 1, 19, through the date that we dated the audit report, which was December 30. That period's called the subsequent event period. Essentially, we need to identify if anything significant or major happened during that timeframe that someone reading the financial statements should know about, and we were not made aware of anything. And that's just really if there'd be any new bond issues, a significant building project, but there was nothing really of that significance that we included. And essentially, most of this, these... And essentially, most of this, uh, these items were in a management representation letter that both Brad and Tom signed off of, uh, as of twelve thirty, twelve thirty, uh, two thousand nineteen. Page six, then, is a little bit about how the audit works. So as the, as a financial audit goes, we are actually not required to test internal controls. That's often the first thing that people think about when they think about an audit, is testing controls. We're not, we're not required to test controls, but we have to understand them. So it'd be really difficult for us to perform an effective audit if I didn't know how the bills were paid, how they're approved, to reconcile accounts, et cetera. So that's our first step, is what has changed from prior years? Who, those processes has changed from prior years? And then essentially, we identify areas of higher risk, and then come up with audit procedures. And every year, we have to switch up our audit procedures. We can't just test the same accounts and the same thresholds each year. Uh, we have to have what's called an element of unpredictability. So every year, we're going to add in new tests, and that's really just, you think back to when Enron happened, you know, auditors might have been testing the same thing every year, and, you know, management might say, hey, they don't look at anything under ten thousand dollars, and so someone will start to put things through at nine thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars, because it wouldn't come up. Not saying that would happen, but it could, and so therefore, that's why we have to switch things up each year. Materiality is a word that we throw around as auditors. Essentially, this helps us do, uh, different calculations. As I said, we don't test everything, we can't test everything. So we're going to do calculations based on the activities that year that help us come up with thresholds. And that's going to determine, over a certain threshold, we're going to test one hundred percent of everything, and maybe under that threshold, we're going to pull a sample. Based on our testing of that sample, we either stop there, or we continue to test if we would run into any issues. As far as adjustments or journal entries, uh, someone pointed out that, uh, you know, in past years, this audit has been a clean audit, there's been no findings, no issues. Um, and one thing that this district is very different to a good standpoint that a lot of my other districts or audities are, is, um, really, we rarely have any proposed journal entries. Um, sometimes we'll be testing and come up with things, and essentially say like, hey, I think, you know, someone, something might need to be included or accrued for, and then we kind of send that back to management, and they'll take a look at it. But we actually have no proposed journal entries as part of our audit. So that is definitely a kudos, and a two thumbs up to management, as far as the, the, uh, scrutiny that they put into all of the transactions throughout the year. We do, however, assist with some of what's called the GASP thirty-four entries. Those are full accrual government-wide entries. Those are kind of above and beyond the day-to-day operations of the school districts. For the most part, management actually does most of those as well, there's just a few of those that we assist with. Page seven, then, are the audit results. So the results of the audit are an unmodified opinion. That's a clean opinion, that's the best opinion you can get, no difference from prior years. Um, also, there were no instances of non-compliance material to the financial statements, and the single audit, or that federal grants audit, was also an unmodified opinion. So another two thumbs up there, or I guess three thumbs up, all unmodified opinions. Page eight, I'm going to go through these next couple of pages pretty quickly. These are really just the required language that essentially, we as a firm have complied with all ethics. We're independent of the district, we've gone through our peer review and provided that peer review report to the district. There were really no significant new accounting policies or ways that the district recorded their transactions during this fiscal period. Continuing on page nine, we always, always have to disclose that there are some estimates that go into putting together financial statements. Management, uh, comes up with those estimates, and then our responsibility as the auditor is to determine whether or not they're reasonable. We look at estimates from prior years, look at actual results, and then identify if essentially they, um, if there's any significant change with their. Page ten, then, really is just kind of the catch-all, there were no difficulties or disagreements during the audit. Everything that needs to be included has been included, and that's really all of the standard language there. So then, page eleven, this is the fun stuff to me, uh, the numbers. So what you're looking at here is a three-year trend analysis of just the general fund. The general fund is on what we call the modified accrual basis of accounting. So this is just how you budget the general fund. So there are some things like receivables, payables, but you're not going to see things on the general fund like fixed assets, or debt, or pension liability. It's kind of more the day-to-day operation. The left-hand side is the June thirty, two thousand nineteen column, so the current year that we just audited, and then eighteen and seventeen to the right-hand side, just this kind of, right-hand side is just kind of some analysis. You'll see the top portion are the revenues of the district, broken out by local, state, and federal. So total revenues for the June thirty, two thousand nineteen year of just under sixty-three million. You can see that's split out about seventy percent, uh, local revenues, twenty-nine percent, uh, state revenues, and then about two percent of federal revenues. The next section is then the expenditures. Um, that's going to be broken out essentially by your, uh, category of instruction, support, non-instruction, debt service, and then refunds of prior year receipts. Essentially, the total expenditures of the district were about fifty-nine point nine million for the year. Um, so then if you take your revenues over your expenses, you had an excess of revenues of about three million. The very bottom, then, is kind of other items, so they're not your normal revenues and your expenses. We add those in, that was a, um, some sale of fixed asset items, and then some transfers out to other funds. That was just under about one million, so the net change or the results of the general fund for the eighteen nineteen year were a positive change of about two million in fund balance. Any questions there before I move forward? And I threw a lot of numbers at you. All right, then slip into page twelve. So we talk about fund balance of the general fund. Fund balance is your assets minus your liabilities. Fund balance is not just cash, there are other asset items, um, receivables, et cetera. But essentially, at the bottom of, of the balance sheet, which we will see then, of the general fund, is your fund balance, and that's broken up into different categories. The top category of C is non-spendable. These are going to be inventory items and then prepaid expenses. We can't pay the bills with those items, so essentially, they're considered non-spendable. Restricted are, uh, is fund balance that's restricted by an outside source. So right here's your Lincoln Benefit Trust, you have about four point five million that's sitting in the Lincoln Benefit Trust under Gettysburg area school district's need. So again, we can't use that to pay the bills of the district, so that's restricted by an outside source. Committed items are then items that the board has acted on. So essentially, you've got capital improvements, just about three point million that has been essentially earmarked by the board for future capital items. Uh, retirement appeasers is about four point two million for future needs related to pension costs, and then about four point two million related to the nineteen twenty budget. So the year you're currently in, you passed a budget that would be using four point two million of fund balance. So essentially, it's been committed, we have to identify that was earmarked. And then what's remaining is considered unassigned general fund fund balance, and that's about nine million. Any questions there?
Well, the issue of fund balances.
Yes.
It's been a pet peeve of mine for a while, and I've, and especially looking at, uh, how charter schools, uh, cyber charters, and break-of-border charter schools. I've read about some of these, uh, cyber and break-of-border charter schools having a tremendous fund balance. I know the Department of Ed, and I'm not sure, uh, maybe it's the Board of Education that's recommended, uh, that we have, that a certain percentage that we stay within that framework. I think we even have a policy on that. What, what are you seeing out there with other schools, uh, that you're, uh, working with, that your group is working with? What is the average, uh, fund balance or percentage that most districts that are being prudent about that, that savings account? Well, how much are they keeping, and so on? And also, I'm, I'm interested, that if you do have a fund balance, like some of these, uh, schools have, especially cyber and charter schools, i- is there any penalty? Is there any accountability? Uh, it doesn't seem to be, or at least I don't remember reading about any of that.
From, I will say, from an independent, uh, accountant auditor's standpoint, I'm not aware of any penalty, but I, I, I've never been in a situation where I work with a client where there'd be any kind of penalty. The, the, the kind of the average that you see is that eight percent, that essentially PDE says, you know, uh, unassigned general fund fund balance should be around eight percent of your revenues. Uh, but, you know, Gettysburg is over that eight percent at the moment. Um, so there's no penalty per se, but my, what I always talk about, a lot of times when I do consulting with governments, is there's a story related to your numbers. And it's hard to tell your story unless you can get someone to sit down in front of you, and you go through the, you know, this is what our district's doing, et cetera. A lot of times, people just look at numbers, and then they come up with their own story. So there's a reason, there are future needs for funds. Um, and I think that's, as long as the board is understanding as far as where we're at fund balance, and what the future holds, and coming up with, here's, you know, there's a plan, and here's what we're going to need in the future, that's what's important. Looking ahead is, is important, because there's so many times where you'll have low, and this is all local government, not just school district, where, oh, you know, we feel pretty cushy with a fund balance, and they don't raise taxes for a long period of time, but then, twenty years down the road, you end up in a, in another position where you don't want to be. So it's being mindful of what the future has. Uh, and there's nothing wrong with being healthy, healthy's a good thing, but it's kind of that fine line of what that story is behind the numbers. Does that make sense? So there's not a, there's not a said, this is what it should be, uh, but it's really understanding what needs your district has, and essentially, everything else that goes into it.
Thank you. If I could follow up?
Sure.
Um, on the committee meeting, you spoke to us at, Gettysburg's trajectory typically, since you started auditing us, generally finish the year on the audit anywhere from ten, as high as twelve percent, in, in the unassigned fund balance, correct?
To what I can remember, yes.
And then, in the audit, are we not utilizing, come back down between the policy of six and eight percent? Or utilizing that excess in the unassigned fund balance to come back in additional, to balance our budget, to, to knock down what any tax or increment raised would yield that year, correct?
To a, to an extent. So as you see on the slide in front of you, the nineteen twenty budgetary reserve, so about four point two million was committed by the board, meaning you passed a budget with a, we'll call it a deficit in the general fund fund balance, meaning you were using funds already on hand of about four point two million. So then, what's left, then, after we went through all that top piece, is that nine point one million, which is still over the eight percent. So it really just depends on, um, what else is coming up in the future as far as being able to keep that fund balance. And there have been, I mean, there were recent projects that the district did where essentially you were able to fund it portion, you know, portionally by, you know, cash on hand. So again, it's just kind of that planning as far as what's on hand. But at this point, you still have more than ninety-eight percent in what's considered the unassigned fund balance. And I, I'll let Brad jump in if he wants to, because that's more his role, I want to speak on his behalf.
Brad, I couldn't let you go. Another year without asking the question.
Well, it's a good observation. Uh, in the current year, we use four point two million to balance the budget. If you had balanced the budget without having that fund balance available, and had the same budget, you would have had to raise revenues by that amount, or you would have had to reduce programs by that amount, or mix. So what we've consistently done is use that amount over the eight percent and final, delete the law. And the law is that if eight percent is a limit of your projected fund balance at the end of that next budget year, so as you develop your budget here in the next coming months, what you're going to look at is a maximum of eight percent at the end of the twenty twenty-one year. That's where the rule applies. The rule doesn't apply to this number. The rule applies that you need to make that come back down to eight percent projected using the university, and we've consistently done that before, as Chris has mentioned. You have used those funds to fund larger projects by cash. For example, the Peck Building was paid by cash. You didn't have any interest cost on any debt to that building. You didn't have any underwriters' cost, marketing cost, legal cost, you paid cash. For the stadium, you paid cash. Again, no interest. None of these, none of these other costs that are a higher burden of the taxpayers. So you use these fund balances to, uh, to eat the cost to our taxpayers, and then avoid the need for taxes to that degree. And so that's part of the story that Chris is mentioning.
I, I, sorry, I, I understand. Somebody's paying for the healthcare, I mean, I know we may have paid cash, but we built that cash through tax increments or some other thing.
Absolutely, but the cost was reduced because.
Right, I, I agree. But the other option would be, is we go into the budget process, and I apologize, would not also be looking at our cap, fire cap plan, and if we chose as a board to maybe put on hold some sort of project. I'm not suggesting we are, but that would be the only other way we'd be able to hit around, round that, correct?
Other than produce for rent. Well.
One of the other things that's been happening, if on the longer version of the audit page on, the financial highlights, um, it talks, towards the bottom, second to last paragraph, in the last paragraph, it talks about, um, that the projected revenue exceeded the actual. And there's been a dialing in of that, that you're looking at actually how much taxes are being collected, and, um, you know, a little bit more conservative, I think is the correct word there, with that projection. And then there was a substantial cost savings on healthcare that came in below budget, so that's also going to impact then, when we look at the overall, uh, health of the budget, and then those numbers. And so that, especially page on, last two paragraphs, where it talks about the financial highlights, and does go on to page ten, there's some important information there to understand overall what's, um, coming out behind some of those numbers.
It's bad enough, I said, but as we went through the budget process last year, there was several places where it was tight, so you should not expect similar results from this year as those from eighteen nineteen. It, it was done with a, with a powerful pencil and drawing, and the healthcare cost had gone down, and, um, some of these other things that happened, including the pandemic and the pandemic itself, and it's correct.
And not to get lost, one last question, that's just a follow-up from, you know, the committee meeting tonight, and a meditation spot I did, we're going. Um, it was my understanding, in your opinion, when we looked at the whole, the school districts that you audited, that Gettysburg was certainly, I don't want to use the word above everybody else, but we were sitting in a comfortable spot with our, with our finances, and the programs, and our five-year capital plan, our, our district requests and stuff. By the audit, you would agree that we're not in any dire straits at this point?
Oh, I, I definitely agree. I mean, you've got a fund balance, which is great. There are school districts out there that do not have a fund balance. Uh, the one thing I, I do, I will point out is fund balance moves every day, so that number does change. So that number we were looking at right there was June thirty, two thousand nineteen. On July one, it will change, so that is a little bit of a moving target there. But yeah, you've got a fund balance, and then the key here is you're looking ahead. I mean, there are even school districts out there that don't have a five-year capital plan. Um, they're worried about what's happening next week, and that's kind of like the biggest fire they're pointing out right now. So yes, you've come a long way, and I mean, that is definitely kudos to current board, past board, current management and staff. Uh, there's a lot of work that goes into that. It's a, it's a big business to be running, and although it's a governmental school district, it needs to be run as a business, and essentially, looking forward to the future.
Thank you.
Any other que, and I will point out, page nine, is actually the section of your audit called Management's Discussion and Analysis, and your management wrote that part of the audit. So that, and that's the key, is that's where the district can help tell the story, but I understand no one actually reads, not many people actually read that. Okay. I mean, there will be a test, but I read it. Okay, so I'm going to flip to page thirteen now, and we kind of just touched on this, to be honest, but really, this was just to take a look at budget versus actual, uh, for the eighteen nineteen year. This is very high level, total budgeted revenues were about sixty, uh, sixty-one point one million, you came in at sixty-two point nine million, so that was a positive, um, oh, revenues over budget of about one point seven million, mostly in your local revenues, uh, which are going to be your, your real estate taxes, earned income taxes, came in pretty high over what was budgeted, that's really out of your control. And, uh, delinquent earned income tax also, uh, was pretty high this year. Again, a lot of that's not, you know, you don't have control over that. As far as expenses, expenses were budgeted in the general fund at just under sixty-three million, and they came in just under sixty million, so about a three million dollar of positive variance there, meaning expenses were under budget. One of the big items you already brought up was that savings and the healthcare switching to the high deductible plan as of January one. So you had half a year of that savings during this audited period. But essentially, the original budget for eighteen nineteen showed a deficit of the general fund of about four million, and you actually had positive results for about. And if we switch to the next page, I'm actually going to have you jump back to Appendix A, because it's just easier to essentially look at, and Andrew, if you keep scrolling back through, keep going.
Fun down?
Yep. I think one more. So I know it's hard to read on the screen, but you have it in front of you. This is an actual page from the financial statements. So what we just went over essentially was the general fund. There are two other governmental type funds of the school district. So on the page you're looking at, which has twenty-nine at the bottom, because it's out of your audited financial statements, this is the governmental fund, so the general fund on the left-hand side. And then you've got the capital projects fund, and then the debt service fund in total. What you're looking at here is the balance sheet, so the assets at the top of the report. And then at the bottom, you've got the liabilities and the fund balance. So the fund balance piece is what we actually looked at on that one slide for the general fund. But this brings all of the governmental funds together. So essentially, total assets of the governmental funds of just under about forty-one million. You've got liabilities of the governmental funds of about nine million or so. And then you've got the fund balance, so assets minus liabilities. And then I'm just going to have you slip one more page, and we looked at the general fund revenues and expenses. This just again brings in those other two funds, so the capital projects fund and the debt service fund. So this is the total governmental funds of the district. And really, no activity in the debt service fund and some activity in the capital projects fund. Any questions there? I'm going to have you flip back, and I'm just going to touch real quick on the food service fund. So if you can go back to page fifteen. The food service fund is what we call a proprietary fund. That means it acts like it's doing a little business. So all of the food service fund activity is kept completely separate from the other funds of the district. What you'll see here again is a three-year trend analysis, left-hand side, operating revenues of about five hundred and ninety-four thousand for the year, operating expenses of about one point six million. So we have this, what we call an operating loss of about a million. But then we bring in what's called non-operating revenue, and that's all the funding that you get from the state and federal government towards meals, don't eat it food, et cetera. And that's about one point two six five million. So the, the change in net position or the results of the food service fund are about two hundred and twenty-two thousand to the good, or a positive two hundred and twenty-two thousand. Now, I will just throw out here that the food service fund is on the full accrual basis. So we actually put fixed assets on the books of the food service fund. We have, there's no actual debt, but there's a pension liability. The district's portion of the state's pension liability that's related to food service workers goes on this financial statement. So there's a lot of non-cash type transactions that get recorded here. Essentially, if that net pension liability goes up and down, that'll hit the, the expenses one way or the other as far as adjustments there. So there are, there are other items that go into being booked on the food service fund here. Any questions on food service? It's usually hot topic data. There are a lot of districts that never have a positive result on that food service fund. And this was one area that we talked about at the finance committee meeting. It's definitely a, a good thing, and a lot of schools, the general fund is, is keeping the food service fund fluid. So then the last thing that I'm going to ask you to switch back to is Appendix B. And that's going to say twenty-six at the bottom. Again, this is an excerpt from the actual full financial statements. So we talked about the general fund, how you budget the general fund day-to-day activities. We talked about the other governmental funds, the capital reserve fund, the debt service fund. Two more. Yeah, one more. And then we talked about food service fund. So the pages, the next three pages are what are called the full accrual government-wide financial statements. So this is when you take all of that activity for the district and you add on things like fixed assets. You add on the debt obligations, the liabilities related to the debt. You add on the pension liability for the district, everything full but full. So as the first page you can see here are the assets of the finance, of the full government. The left-hand column is the general fund and those other two governmental activities. The middle column is that food service fund, and then the total on the right. So essentially, total assets on this full accrual method is about a hundred and thirty-five million. And then if you switch to the next page, this is then when we look at the liabilities of the district. You've got the debt on there, compensated absences, other post-employment benefits, the net pension liability. And then essentially, you drop down to what's called net position, kind of like your fund balance. And total fund balance, I'll just call it that, for the district as a whole is actually a negative thirty-eight thousand dollars. And again, that's because we're putting on essentially what the net pension liability of the district at June thirty nineteen was valued at. So that was, if everyone had to be, had to have been paid out at June thirty, two thousand nineteen, what that would cost the district, the district portion of that full state pension system, the other post-employment benefit plans, et cetera. But again, I have to say, it's a good position to be in on that full accrual basis, because there are many districts that that negative number is very high. So again, even on that full accrual basis, it's a, essentially, I'll say a, a break-even situation between the funds. Any questions there? And then the last piece is just because I gave you the balance sheet on the full accrual basis, I just brought in what's called the statement of activities or the income statement. And this is all of those revenues and expenses, again, on the full accrual basis. So any capital purchases would not be included in expenses, because we capitalize them on the balance sheet. Any payments towards the debt, not included in the expenses, because we decreased the liability on the balance sheet. That's kind of the difference between the two. As Brad always likes to point out, and he did in the finance committee, it's kind of two separate financial statements. And really, the district on a day-to-day operation is just looking at the general fund as we had looked at first. But this is a requirement of all school districts to present this information on that full accrual. So I know I threw a lot of numbers at you, very high level, really not a lot of detail. But hopefully, if anything I didn't go over that you were hoping I would, let me know. As far as the single audit goes, we tested, we tested Title I this year. So usually, we have to test one program every year. Some years, it'll shake out that we actually have to test two, based on coverage. We did not have any findings related to the single audit. I can't stand here and say there are no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies. That's a, a language thing that I can't say, but essentially, we didn't have any material weaknesses or significant deficiencies based on our audit. So again, you know, two thumbs up, that's another, another kudos to the district. But I just have to say, you know, thank you to Brad, Tom and their staff. Very well organized, great to work with. Brad was just saying to Belinda, I think, I think this is my twelfth audit that, you know, I worked with Brad and Tom. Fresh out of college, I started, you know.
Brad, have you been a little scary?
First time I met him, you know, a little intimidating, but no, it's been a great pleasure working with him and Tom. And I wish him well in his retirement, and he's moving up to the boonies where I'm from. So I can appreciate the life that he'll, he'll have. But, and just thank you to the board for the continued relationship. If there would ever be any questions outside this meeting, I can easily be accessed to provide any more information.
Thank you so much.
I'd say, the reason that we stand on this is to continue to do the school districts audit is because they're thorough. Their audits are rigorous, they are, they don't leave things unturned. And I, as much as anyone, really appreciate Carter, who, you know, do make sure that they have done everything. Stand on us, and specifically, Chris, the first half, I would say, who were better. Who have very thorough, very comprehensive, thorough, thorough reports. I appreciate that, thank you.
My job is to be a pain in the butt, and probably I've been so bad. Thank you.
Thank you again. Thanks, Chris. The next informational item is Page two, achievement update.
Good evening, thank you. Last year, you provided the board with a similar report as far as the demographics and our achievement performance data, and some information about growth previous years, specifically the past year. So our demographic slide hasn't changed significantly. Continue to have over forty percent poverty in the district with our elementary campuses close to fifty percent who are eligible for free reduced lunch. And that's what the economically disadvantaged measure there indicates. So what we've tried to do in the past with our students' performance data is trying to capture some statements that apply to all of our grade levels that are tested. So some of those statements are provided in bullets on this slide, and I believe you have handouts in front of you as well. So move to the next slide for a breakdown. So for third, fourth and fifth grade, we combined the three elementary campuses. And these slides, again, the numbers on the screen are, are not very large, but you have a handout in front of you that addresses first the percentage of proficient and advanced learners in both content areas that are tested in grade three. That's compared then to the state average. We're provided a statewide goal that we must achieve by twenty thirty. So it compares where we are now in comparison to where we need to be by twenty thirty. And then we also share with you the two thousand and eighteen percent of students proficient and advanced. And again, the average for the state for last year. So you can see the breakdown then for grades three, four and five. And again, this is combining our three elementary campuses. And then the next slide provides that same information for grade six, seven and eight. And then it's a statement about the growth measure for those students at the middle school level. All of the content areas exceeded the PA academic growth standard. So congratulations to our middle school students. The next slide shares our science performance. Students are only tested in grades four, eight, and then, let's just hand over them to Jeremy to go over our Keystone content area specific assessments that are conducted at the high school. But for fourth grade and eighth grade science, you can see there that our students are exceeding state average. And we're well on track to, or we have not already exceeded the state expectation for twenty thirty in science. So Jeremy, you want to talk a little bit about our Keystone results?
Surely, just, just as with so many other graphics, it's nice to compare last year's group to the year before. And you can see in algebra, biology and literature, there's been increases in each of those areas. And also, you know, if you compare our scores to the state average, it's good to see that in algebra, for instance, we're thirty percentage points above, already hitting the goals for twenty thirty. In biology, we're seven percent ahead of the curve in Pennsylvania. Again, close to this, we're working on the state goal for twenty thirty, get there soon enough. But again, a little bit better than the previous year's scores. And also in literature, with eighty-five percent of our students proficient or advanced. That looks pretty good against the sixty-two percent average around the state. And again, is seven percent higher than the previous group, though it's always a little bit tough to compare one class of students to the previous class. It's always a little bit dangerous to do that, but it's obviously good to see a positive turn there. The next slide is specifically about our advanced scores. And it's telling when you compare our scores to the state. And comparing our scores to the previous year in ELA, I believe it's a, it's a twelve point, twelve percentage point increase from the year before. Also a twelve percent increase in mathematics and algebra from two thousand and nineteen to two thousand and eighteen. And I believe our biology score is up eight percent from the previous group. So all of those advanced scores are on the rise. And it's also interesting to know that the state scores were flat. It wasn't, wasn't that everybody around the state was doing better in terms of their advanced scores. So it's, it's good to see that our numbers are on the rise. I guess it's not good to know that the state scores are flat, but I'll take our numbers.
And this is a summary slide where we combine all the scores at the elementary level, all grade levels. And I'm looking at that, it's growth, when this would apply, excuse me, just to fourth and fifth grade. There's now a P-BUS score for grade three. So it's four to five, and you look at the ELA and that growth score for us for two thousand and nineteen and comparing that to the state average and statewide goal. And we are falling short of that for our performance in two thousand and nineteen. And we have had meetings with our student data, school data team, looking at our P-BUS scores and some of our benchmark data, and made plans for our performance mid-year to the end of the year, to include walkthroughs such so. We are monitoring the work that's occurring in the classrooms, and we look forward to getting back on track for two thousand and twenty. And then our middle school growth, as you can see, our two thousand and nineteen growth scores exceeded the state average and are already ahead of what is expected for the statewide goal in two thousand and thirteen. So congratulations to our middle school.
The next slide speaks to our success in advanced placement courses offered through the college board. And this is an area that we've, we've put a lot of focus in over the course of time, because all the data shows that if you can provide reverse experiences to your students in high school and teach them how to be successful there, their chances or likelihood of success in college increases dramatically. So we encourage a lot of our students to take AP classes. You see a hundred and seventy-one different students took an AP course. And we have three hundred and five total tests being taken, and the success rate there is pretty good. We have many of our students earning threes and above, and that's, that's a credit to their own hard work and the work of our educators as well. Next slide, just a nice visual on our success on both the SAT and the ACT, beating the state and national averages. So things, things look good there as well. This slide speaks to, I think the programs, it's been part of the conversation even in recent board meetings, about career technical education. And it's good to see a lot of our students involved in programs of study that ultimately end up in an OPTI test or something similar. And we have many students involved in our tech ed programs, and it's good to see their success in the numbers, numbers of students that, that jump into those programs. This, this slide also speaks to our, our participation in reverse courses. AP on the far right side shows forty point eight percent of our students taking an AP class by the time they leave school. And we have many, many others taking college and high school courses through PAC. We've started to look at a few other partnerships with Harrisburg University to supplement what we're already done with PAC. And again, it's just always looking to provide as many opportunities for our students to, to get an edge on their next life in education, post-secondary education. So if you compare that to the state averages, we have a great number of students comparatively accessing those reverse courses, and it pays off for them to do it. In the end, it's about giving diplomas to students, and we do a good job of that. And you might look at that and say, what about the other five percent? We don't give them away. They have to earn them. Sometimes students do come up a little bit short, but if you look at the averages, we're doing really well there. And as students transition on, our numbers look comparative to state averages a little bit, little bit better. We have a large number of students moving on to post-secondary education. We have plenty entering the workforce as well, and sometimes you have students doing both. And we have a fair number of students entering the military, thankfully. So those numbers look positive as well.
So our final slide, just action items that we captured as an administrative team. We continue to work on our curriculum. We continue to work on our curriculum revision, utilizing the Understanding by Design model with our curriculum building tool in EduPlana. We consistently are using benchmarks and progress monitoring, so we're not waiting for this one summit to score at the end of the school year to tell us how our students are performing. We're using that information along the way, making adjustments to our instruction, and very heavily providing targeted interventions, instruction, particularly at the elementary level in reading. And we're building that model with a recent intervention period that we purchased for mathematics. A lot of focus tier one instruction. Most of what our students are learning from is happening in the core with the regular classroom teachers and push and support from our specialists. A lot of project-based learning with a lot of support from our instructional coaches in the design of those projects. Again, always looking at that personalized and customized professional learning for our staff. And collaboration and peer coaching is something that we're adding to, back into our differentiated supervision plan for the 2021 school year in hopes that we can utilize as well our teachers to be serving as instructional coaches to each other, not just our instructional coaches that we have on staff. So those are some things that we, you know, that we're currently doing or planning to move into 2021 school year. So we'll accept any questions if there are, our team's here.
Thanks for, thanks to the administrative team for putting this together. We started this last year just as kind of a snapshot in terms of, in terms of achievement. Understanding, of course, that our student experience is well beyond the summit of nature of these tests, as Dr. Lee mentioned. But so like to congratulate the administrative team and their staffs on some of the successes that they reviewed here tonight, and appreciate the fact they're all focused on continuous improvement. So thanks for, thanks for that, we appreciate it.
Couple of questions. Jeremy, with the graduation rate, myself and several other superintendents met with Pedro Rivera, our secretary of that, and we were really pushing for that they will look at changing how they were grading Pennsylvania schools in that area. It used to be that that only considered students that graduated within four years. There's students that might take a little bit longer for whatever reason, and my feeling is, the main thing is, is that you finish and you get that diploma. Have they changed that, or is that still a four-year figure?
They do report a five-year cohort as well, so sort of yes.
The other thing, again, I would commend everyone involved with, it's really good news. Question, for college credit on the advanced placement testing, is it, you have to score a four or a five to get college credit for that, or is it a three or above?
It depends on where you're going to go to school.
Gotcha, okay.
And I'll say, many schools take a three, but you know, there's, there's plenty of schools that require at least a four.
And I commend you all on focusing on formative assessments along the way, so changes can be made and students identified. I like your focus on growth over arbitrary cutoff scores for proficiency. Chris, I did have a question, and I think I asked something some of us last year. I would be interested with our large number of students that are economically disadvantaged, those students, students with an IEP, and our BLL students with some language barriers, if you have any other information on how they're performing, I'd be interested, and I'm thinking maybe the board would be interested in seeing some of that as well.
A lot of that break would be, because these reports are by school, and so many of our different elementary campuses wouldn't have enough of some of those demographic populations to get a, a report to segregate that data, but certainly, yes, we can pull those reports from the source.
We could also share the links to the state reporting sites that are, that are available to the public. And I don't want to belabor, but Dr. Lee, you know, maybe his term here, what I just heard and what I saw in the presentation and read, it's pretty simple. We have tremendous new staff that starts at the elementary level, starts the formation of building blocks, has taken over at the middle school with the teachers and administration, and Jeremy gets the luxury to a degree of getting a sound foundation that allows him to really hit the numbers when you start talking about AP. And if you look at that partnership with HAC, we almost have to thank them, what they're doing for our students moving forward. And I would be remiss, popular, my favorite part of that is when you look at the TAC program and what we're turning out there, and the new adventure that we've partnership with the other districts to improve and give them our opportunity. I can't tell you a better state of the union. We can talk about money all day long, but we got it really taking care of what really counts in as a state. Thank you.
If there are no more additional comments, eight point three, the compensation analysis, and I believe Tom, briefly touch on that from the board?
Sure, yeah. I don't know if I need the microphone or...
Pass it back if you could. Sorry, Tom, I assume that you would enlighten us briefly as to that informational item?
Basically, some of this information was already provided, but over the past year, the hiring and retention of classified employees has become a difficult issue. So we've been working on some solutions to try to address that, and at this point, we feel that a study, a compensation benefit study for classified staff would be in the world before we can really finalize what those solutions might be. So we're simply looking for an independent professional entity to do a study for support staff to take a look at their, their compensation.
Right. We'll look at, we'll look at several options, as we're not the first district to do this. So we'll, we'll take a look at what's available to us that can give us kind of the best, the best return, and administration would come to the board as an action item for whatever compensation study makes the most sense at a future, at a future date. But we just want to remain competitive in the region, especially with some of, some of those tough, kind of the skilled labor with, you know, plumbing, electricians and those types of things. And we have to watch the market, not in New Pennsylvania, but the folks that got across the line into Maryland as well. So thanks, Tom, appreciate it.
Any additional questions on the informational items, on the board committee reports?
I do have a legislative report if you would allow me. And then on House Resolution 180, the resolution directs the state government commission to establish an advisory committee to do the study of the state's current return on investment in the after-school program. Additionally, the commission would provide feedback in bolstering the return on investment in the after-school program. The resolution was approved unanimously in the House Children and Youth Committee on January twenty-second of this year. Bill 50590, this important piece of legislation establishes the Charter School Funding Advisory Commission to review and make recommendations concerning charter school funding and related issues, including current law, review extensive policy statements which determine funding of the charter schools, regional charter schools, and cyber charter schools. School choice. I was able to participate in two very different but related opportunities this week. The first was invitation to participate in the White House call on school choice. During the briefing, the Department of Education Secretary, Fetsy Vowles, provided an update on an administrative ongoing effort to address the cost association with the school choice. The second was the National School Board Advisories Advocacy Institute, which I just returned from earlier this afternoon. I was also able to visit Washington DC as a Gettysburg area school district representative to the National School Board Association Advocacy Institute. The goal of this group is to create the best school choice option for all students in the school district. The system is wide and needs to be reinforced. This stated very mildly. I believe that sending my children, which I have a degree of, is the best choice for them in this school district. It is my goal, and I know the goal of each of us, to provide all students, Gettysburg area school district, with the best possible education. I believe we currently provide that, and I look forward to strengthening the district into the 2020 years and beyond.
Thank you.
The Finance Facilities Committee met. I was not present, but I did agree the two main topics of, which is the capital improvement program was shared, and then the audit. The next, we have the Finance Facilities Committee will be on the twentieth of February.
And the Policy Committee, there's nothing new since last time I reported on that, so we will pass them.
And while Andrew, our Communications Director, is not on the committee report, I spoke with him, and if you don't mind, Andrew, if you could give a brief public overview of the Brand Ambassador Branding Committee, just briefly where we're at, what you guys, where you got, what you're looking at, just so I know some attended, or maybe the vast majority didn't.
Absolutely, yep. So just a very short update here, in the sake of time, or for the sake of time, rather. I just want to give a brief overview here. So we formed the Brand Ambassadors Committee in May of 2019. That was followed by the Communications Committee, so that is a committee that's, in Walker means, that was a board subcommittee. But as a result of that, we decided that we would form a Brand Ambassadors Committee. And what the committee consists of, or who the committee consists of, rather, are employees and community representatives, so we do have all stakeholders involved. And what we are doing, basically, what we started out by doing was a brand audit, and what we found was there were many inconsistent logos being used, several different versions of the same logo essentially, but they were just different. For example, some of the cannonballs in the logo, like some of them had five, some of them had six, just little things like that got changed over the years. We also don't have any set fonts that we really use as a district, and all of this kind of goes hand in hand with our brand. And the shades of maroon and white that we use are also very inconsistent, so what we are looking to do is solidify all of that. And in the end, there will be a website, a place where you can go to find all of this information, so it will be very consistent. Why we're doing this a little bit more, you know, a brand is more than just a logo. It increases positive perceptions of the district while creating a unified look and feel, so that's one of the goals that we're going for. And also a well-defined brand with a clear identity supported by standards and guidelines, which we will have at the end of this. Not only does it strengthen district communication, but it also strengthens the district's position in the marketplace. And of course, as you know, the school marketplace is, there's not just public schools anymore, so there's, there's quite a few options for people to choose, and of course, we do want everyone to choose our district as a school of choice. And why this is also important is because, you know, whenever you think of brands, you think of emotional attachments that you have. If you watched the Super Bowl last night, you probably saw many different ads on there, and some of them you may have an emotional attachment to those brands. So we're looking to kind of do the same thing with the school district. Of course, it's not going to be quite the same, but we do want people to feel like they do have an emotional attachment to the district. It also shares expectations, experiences, and a vision for the district moving forward. And most importantly, I should note that we are doing this with no financial impact to taxpayers, so current supplies like letterhead and business cards and things like that will be used up before it's printed with whatever the committee decides. So basically, there's three broad stages. We did the research and the audit already, so right now we're talking about brand design in the committee and how our brand is evolving. And then finally, hopefully by spring, summer, and then when fall rolls around, we'll be able to roll out the new district brands. That will be exciting. We do have regular meetings. They don't quite meet the same time every month, but we do have a committee of about nineteen people. Like I mentioned, they, we do have all stakeholders involved, including representation from the Alumni Association as well. And if you do have any comments or questions, feel free to email those to me. You can email those to communications@gasd-pa.org. And I'm happy to finally, to conclude this by saying that we've had some really robust conversations in our Brand Ambassador Committee, and I'm really happy with the progress we've made, and I'm looking forward to continuing those in the committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions?
Comment that I did go to the last meeting, and it was refreshing and wonderful, and I was so impressed and just thankful that I, not only that I went, but that I was part of that, and I really wanted to thank you very much.
Thank you for coming.
Really good program reports. One last, one last piece. We are, the admin team is currently engaged in the process for mandatory charter schools. They requested a renewed their five-year charter. So just as we did for V to charter school, this past spring, we're going through a similar process, and we will bring a recommendation to the board regarding probably as information enabled for action today. I would just add, this topic came up under the pass board specifically to Mr. Walker and myself. Gettysburg has a unique opportunity. We're going to be celebrating fifty years at Camp Hemlock with the middle school sixth grade class. Over twenty thousand students came, coming through this district, attended the sixth grade camp at some point or another. They reached out to us, the representative, Mr. Tony Floyd, back in October, September, whenever they went to camp, and certainly they would like to recognize the fiftieth year anniversary, and would appreciate my input from the board, the board's assistants, on how they would roll that out. I spoke with Mr. Floyd, he's going to be speaking with Ms. Herb, and at some point, either Ms. Herb or Mr. Floyd will get back to us with recommendations to the board on what they would like to do. And I wanted to get the ball moving earlier just because of whether or not it was going to require any action from the board in terms of funding and stuff as we move through the budget for next year. So that's a very positive note, and I think we'd have a lot more support, and I believe the community will be inundated, will be inundated with support from the community. That's a lot of kids going through a very successful program. And lastly, I'd end, I congratulate not only our performing arts people through our code of Christmas, and I failed to do that, but now we have also, one heck of a winter sports program is enjoying a lot of success and bringing some good reputation back to Gettysburg, not that we haven't before, but congratulations to the, to not only to the performing arts people through the programs that they perform and put on for us over the holiday season, boy, to follow that up with the wrestling, the boys and girls basketball, et cetera. Really some good things happening.
Yeah, academically as well, students, and all the students association, they're well in the regional competition, and they will move forward to the state competition in, in seventh spring. Having judged that competition in the past, it's always fantastic. So congratulations to not just the students, but the faculty that work with them and the parents that support that as well. So thanks.
And finally, the calendar events, as a reminder, we'll hold our next school board meeting February eighteenth, that is a Tuesday because of a holiday on Monday. I want to thank the administrative staff, and probably if they come out to the meeting, it means a lot to the board members that not only were you able to support you, but you're supporting us to pay back on your attendance here. With that, I have a motion to adjourn.
Motion for adjournment?
Okay. Question? Stand adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.